So I turned it into. I just.
Nick Vinder?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Trandam?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Alvin?
Here.
Ralph?
Here.
Close?
Here.
United States of America, we consider Republic or which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Correctional, materials and check eyes to my father. And approval of measures by the written or amended, A, approval of three seventeen twenty-five public hearing minutes. They have a motion? Hearing second, correction, updates. Will call?
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
B, approval of three seventeen twenty-five city council meeting, they have a motion? So. And a second, I'll say, Kyle, the update or correction for shell. Will call?
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Uh, six positions present on non-adjutant items. Anyone? Reports and communications for the mayor and other city officers reported treasure. I'm sorry, John, thanks Brian, reported budget officer. Report subdivision in Zelling in this area. Reported deputy director of public works, nothing to report, mayor. Reported director of public works.
Stephen briefed up there on recent storm events, based by utility poles and countless, uh, loads of piles of flames and brush and that from treatments falling down and work will be prepared this weekend, uh, for the rain events, we have a few issues that we have to work through. That's my report.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, reported chief of police?
The reporter.
And reported city attorney?
Nothing to see me, mayor.
Reports and communication by mayor, number one, attempt at recognition to the mayor for the day, Elise Burke, there. You have a good day?
Yeah.
Do you want to go on one, you had a great day, did you have fun? He's due certificate combination for his father forever recognition for his twentieth anniversary. It's been twenty-five years here, right?
Uh, yeah, I've been doing this for almost fifty. Yeah. Twenty-five years here.
You're probably pretty good at it by now.
Uh, I hope so. I've worked at it, I'm a student.
Yeah, right. We want to, if you want to take this. Can we go first and then have everybody join us?
Yeah, I want to.
Sure.
Much nicer.
All right, I don't know, step forward, have them follow it around.
Uh, us?
Couple rows, yeah, each other forward. Everyone to fill it. Yeah, we're on the front, all of us, uh. Now I can see you as the rest of, the micros up listening, there you go. You can just stand up normally. All right. That was great. Um, now we.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, I want to say thank you for the recognition, and I wanted to say thank you to my team, because I wouldn't be anything without my team, and our new doctor, Dr. Hassler, and my wife and my daughter run my practice and tell me what to do, so all they have to do is fix teeth. So I'm in good shape, and, uh, so, thank you.
That's optimistic, though.
I'm optimistic.
We're very happy, happy to do it.
Thank you. And congratulations.
So next, we're doing the presentation to back to the Pina for a second place showing of the high school FM class two eight wrestling. Congratulations. Number eight, reporters standing committees, reporters special committees. Presentation communication positions for reporters in order to fight all of them. A consideration national number one nine zero two authorizing advance an easement on initially owned real property. Have a motion? All right. Kyle, and a second. Tina? This is a an easement for our existing water tower here, that's no longer in use. Uh, we've got a contract with Verizon and other, uh, utility companies for since nineteen ninety-seven. This is actually a, a little bit different, uh, than that one, uh, like, basically the same thing, should have about the same. We have questions or anything? Just went through finance and organs, we're all good. Will call?
Kyle Vinder?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Booth? Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Good job. B, consideration actual reappraisal of Donald Flawed on the one and fifty for work, century important for a three-year term to expire on April. Who?
I'll make a. I'll make a.
I'll make a motion. Last one, second.
Sorry.
Hearing. Will call?
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll go back to A. Consideration action on the war number six forty-eight, have a motion? Matt, and a second. So blue. Russ? Will call?
Matt Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Go.
Motion approved.
C, consideration action on, uh, approval of the line on road oil LLC twenty forty, concrete supply Illinois, as well there's for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and a team maintenance as group bids open on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at two P M. May a motion?
Okay.
Joel, one second. Matt? This was just a normal, you know, things. How many bits do we have on this?
Uh, we had a three on the oil, one on the, uh, aggregate, and then two on the, uh, concrete.
Oh, within the.
Full start, where we thought it would be, okay, great.
Will call?
Booth?
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth? Yes.
Motion approved.
D, consideration actual special event permit application for the former office club and the firm home group club for annual review. We held a base set at twenty twenty-five at four P M to make third twenty twenty-five at seven P M, including closure of Main Street, Third Street, Mill Street, and possibly farther towards M D R R, and Third Street, Main Street, East Alley, and Mill Street, Main Street, and First Alley. Have a motion? They have a motion, mayor? Hearing, and a second?
One second.
This is their, their annual, uh, one hundred and fifty years, and that's like our eight, three event each year. Will call?
Booth? Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved.
E, consideration action on a non, non problem grant program application from the White Side Station, chapter N S D A R, the amount two thousand dollars for the project, middle county resolution, and work papers. They have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Tina, and a second?
I'll second.
Kyle? Actually, this is in order to put bricks out in, in, uh, part, uh, of all our revolution, our wars, uh, soldiers from middle county. I think there are forty, I believe. Forty?
I can't, around that.
Forty. Will call?
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Booth? Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
F, consideration action on a one group identification application for Brian Deal, appropriately located at seven twenty-five North Market Street. They have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Tina, and a second?
Okay.
Joel? Yeah?
Hi, I'm over at the university station.
Will call?
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yeah.
Booth?
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Which is terrible. Yeah.
It was.
G, consideration national approval of Pleasant Tire site plan, they have a motion?
So.
Russ, and a second?
So.
Joel? Russ?
Then one through, uh, plenty tonight, uh, well, true.
Perfect. Will call?
Ralph?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Vinder?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trandam?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
H, consideration actual detective session for discussion of any litigation as per five I O T S, which twenty, like to see ill power. Uh, motion to leave regular session. Matt, and a second? Hearing? Those are the bigger I.
Uh.
I would like to just step out here, so we have to make sure we're at least.
So it's a good night?
You too.
Hey, congratulations, by the way.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Hey, I can't remember the gentleman. You're right. Congratulations for being there for the game. You had a great day.
It was awesome.
Thank you. Zero zero.
You guys got none? Do you have more? This is the behind.
There you go.
Yeah.
I hope you had fun.
It was, yeah, thank you.
I will get a book for you, okay? That's gonna be really cool to show up to your friends, have you played with your sand since you were little?
She did.
Yes.
Griffin zero, it was a counter time right away.
Oh, of course. All right, well, enjoy the rest of the evening, gotta go back to school tomorrow.
Yeah, back to the real old. Thanks again for.
No problem, we enjoyed it.
It was, uh, an eventful day, for sure.
Yeah, for sure, you learned a lot.
Yeah, I was, I was going back to what we all did, it's like, whoa, we really did a lot of stuff.
In one day, right? All right, take it easy.
Thanks again, yep. You too. Almost game. If you had a pause, it would have liked.
Okay, yeah.
I was taking some of the bars. Why? That's what came off of them. That's the.
Hearing?
Oh, there. Only. Just. Oh. I'm trying to hold. I don't know. You shit. You see that? Yeah.
Oh, God.
You don't get a raise.
Watch that.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, they can tell your shit a lot, huh?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Hey, Billy.
Feel right?
Yeah.
Damn, yeah.
Look at you, hell.
I was like, that's.
You know that two years ago?
Yeah. But, heck, I'm that lucky.
You're gonna feel a lot more me soon.
Motion to your return section? Gary in a second?
Second.
Ross, close the big ride?
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion of matters, uh, matter, I think the council was, uh, headline. Joel?
I had something now, I forgot, so it's not interesting.
You want to?
I'm sorry.
Matt?
Jeff.
Jeffy? Hey.
Love thing.
Ian?
Oh, man.
I would say today, we had, we had a great day today with, uh, Elise, uh, Berger. Uh, started out this morning, uh, breakfast at Bean Tree. Uh, did a number of things, went to the elevated tower, uh, water plant, uh, launch sewer plant, connected sewer plant. And I know there were somewhere else, not that, and they finished up today with, uh, Sarah. It was, it was a fun day.
Her favorite part was the sand at the water.
So, sand, the sand that comes out was softer.
Yes.
Uh, so she could just barely touch it. Said, I gotta, I gotta lock it, turn it upside down, and that was her favorite part of the day. Uh, motion to your jury?
Aye.
Joel in a second?
Second.
Close the big ride?
Aye.